All right, good evening. These, uh, oh, wait a second here. This meeting is being held in the, sorry. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, public law in 1975. Adequate notice of the meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the matters listed below. And this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV, so we can all watch it later when we have some time, spare time. Okay, good, join me as Lou Fleckley.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God in the great just one.
I don't know if you take roll call. James Bonanno?
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Here.
Eric Galloco, accent. Jim Henry?
Here.
Mayor John Moore is not here. And Daniel Shinameo is not here. Jennifer Souter, here. Vice Chair Rick Lambert?
Here.
Chairwoman Barbara Kerzade.
Here.
Okay, there's just a minor change that we're going to make to the, to the agenda. There's a, there, we have to do the, hang on, we have to do, we have to do the swearing in.
Yeah, the oath of office.
The oath of office, which is, which is G, and we're going to switch that with E that's on here. So we have to do the oath of office first, so if...
Let me give everyone a copy. Do you have those?
No.
I'll give everybody a copy. You don't have to read it aloud, just read it, and I'll witness your signature. While we're doing that, James, did you listen to or review transcripts?
Oh, I watched the video. Yeah, from December 12th, right?
Thank you. We'll get you an affidavit at some point for the record. We'll have that, so you can...
Okay.
After you read them, sign them, give them to me, and I'll... Take that at the next meeting, and we shall...
Okay. All right, so then you'll pass those on to Jack?
Sure.
You can sign them and pass them on?
We just sign them?
Oh, yeah, it's, no, it's the oaths. It's the oaths because you were reappointed.
We don't have to say anything?
I don't know.
As long as you read it. If you tell me you read it, that's fine. We don't have, there's no ceremony that says, or law that says you have to say it aloud, as long as I know you've read it. And you'll read by it, that's all that matters to me. If you tell me you didn't read it, then I'm going to make you read it aloud. Stand up, put your right hand up, just like in grammar school.
Go to the microphone, let them read it.
When I was a young attorney, I used to say, "Let's do all that stuff."
Oh.
No need.
Now that I'm an old attorney.
Lot of pressure here.
You're holding out the worst.
So at this point, that really included, the people that are here would be Jennifer Souter, Yvonne Clayton, who are reappointed, folks that are here, and we have a new member, Michael Gunnin. Is that how I say it?
Perfect.
Perfect. Michael Gunnin is a new member as alternate one. So as of now, since he was sworn in, he is now a full member and can participate in all questions in today's proceedings. He cannot vote because he is not, was not a member during any of the presentations, even though he was in the audience for all of them, I'm sure. Okay, let's move on. This is an odd little meeting that we have because we have to do a reorg. So we have, I need a temporary, we have to temporarily appoint chairperson, board attorney, and secretary. Can I have a nomination for temporary chairperson, please?
Can you nominate Barbara?
Second.
Yes.
Can we do these all at once, or do you need to do them individually? You can do it at once.
Okay, I need, so the temporary board attorney, I nominate Jack.
I second it.
And for temporary board secretary? Excuse me. Board of directors?
I second it.
Okay. All right. Now, there is, on the agenda, there is an executive session. As far as I understand, there aren't, there is no interest in having an executive session. Is there anyone that feels that we need one? Okay, let's move on. So, moving right along. Oh, yeah, we have to vote on the temporary appointments.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Aye, sir.
Okay. All right, now we go into the annual board reorg meeting. Now, we have to go down the nominations. Let me just get...
Nominate Barbara for chairperson.
Second.
Do we want to do them all and do them all at once?
No.
No, okay, let's go.
Any discussion on the motion?
You drive.
Any discussion on the motion?
No.
That's for Barbara as chair.
Barbara as chair. James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara?
No, I'll show them both. That's okay. That's okay.
All right, thank you very much. I nominate for vice chairperson Rick Lambert. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Barbara Kerzade?
Yes.
Thank you.
For board attorney, nominate Jack Cervica?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I already wrote it down. For secretary, I nominate Marie Rodriguez.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
James Bonanno?
Yes.
Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert?
Yes.
For board attorney, I nominate Jack Cervica?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara?
Yes. Conflict attorney, I nominate Beekman Law, the Beekman Law Firm?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin?
Yes.
Jim Henry? Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Chairwoman Barbara Kerzade?
Yes. For board planner, Clark Keatinghens?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert?
Yes.
For Clark, for conflict board planner, T&amp;M Associates?
Second.
Discussion? None, roll call, please.
James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Chairwoman Barbara Kerzade?
Yes. For board engineer, Insight?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, motion, please. Roll, a roll call, please.
James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Chairwoman Barbara Kerzade?
Yes. For conflict board engineer, T&amp;M Associates?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Chairwoman Barbara Kerzade?
Yes. For board recording services, AP-TV?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Chairwoman Barbara Kerzade?
Yes. Okay. For the committees, we have three committees. For the design review committee, do I have, I know that Eric wanted to be on that one. Is there anybody else that would like to be on it?
I'd like to.
Rick? Anyone else?
Can I volunteer?
Of course you may. All right? And I will put you, I will put you as an alt, we need three, so I will put you there. And what we do generally with the design review committee, depending on, depending on what the application is, there might be some, some people that have a greater interest in some of them, so that's more of a flexible committee, but let's start off with Eric, Rick, and Mike at this point. Okay? We have a bylaw committee? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead.
Anyone want to make a nomination for those three individuals?
I'll make a nomination for Eric, Greg.
Eric, Rick.
Eric, Rick, and Mike.
And Mike?
And Mike.
There's no Greg.
There's no Greg. I can be, I'll be the alternate. I can be an alternate.
Okay, so, and then the alternate will be Barbara?
Yes, I'll be the alternate.
I apologize.
It's okay. When Greg shows up, we'll know that he's right.
We can recruit a Greg.
We tried. We have a second on those three, four nominations. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
James Bonanno?
Yes.
You can vote for yourselves on this one, because if we don't, we lose the call, and we'll get right back to Luke's side.
Okay, James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Chairwoman Barbara Kerzade?
Yes. For the, one of our favorites, the bylaw policy committee.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I know, Yvonne loves this one.
I volunteer.
All right, yay. Okay, anybody else? In the past, we've had Jim Henry and Eric and Mike Manzella, but he's no longer here. Anyone else? This is, this is a very exciting committee. We've never met.
We did.
I'm not, not last year.
Once, twice.
Okay, all right. Anyone? Anyone?
All right, I volunteer.
All right. All right, Jim. That's two.
I think James Bonanno should take Mike Manzella's place.
I can.
All right, James.
If you would like.
Okay.
Greg, you can recruit it.
All right.
Just call me Greg.
I'll, I'll be an alternate. Okay, so it's Yvonne, Rick, James, and I'm an alternate. Okay.
Another second, or a motion?
Motion for Yvonne, Rick, and James, and alternate Barbara, for the bylaw committee.
Not me.
Not you?
No.
Who was it?
Jim.
Oh, Jim, not Greg.
And Greg.
And Greg. Okay, Yvonne, Jim, James, and alternate Barbara.
Did you make that motion? Because I don't want to sit here and...
I'd like to, I can. I'd like to make a motion for the bylaws committee for Yvonne, Jim.
James.
Barbara. Barbara's alternate.
Good job, Jennifer.
Good job. Okay. Oh, go ahead.
Any discussion? None, hearing none, roll call, please.
James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Chairwoman Barbara Kerzade?
Yes. Okay, here's the, our last committee is the master plan committee.
Yes.
Ooh, I've got volunteers, excellent.
The fun ones.
All right, which one? All right, we, all three of you? Yvonne, Jen, and Greg. All right, Jen and Rick. I will be an alternate. Why not? It's the role I play.
Gentlemen on the floor left, you have the motion, and second.
So...
Second.
Any discussion? Roll, please.
James Bonanno?
James, yes.
Right, no. Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Chairwoman Barbara Kerzade?
Yes.
And I'll vote on that too, Marie. In the affirmative, I see.
Yes.
Okay. 2003 Planning Board Official Newspapers. I make a motion that it's as the Asbury Park Press and the Coaster.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Barbara Kerzade?
Yes. I'd like to propose the adoption of the 2023 planning board meeting schedule. We've had these discussions in the past, we just have not adopted it.
Do we have a document? A document? Copy of it? Sorry.
Second.
It's the only one in existence?
Yeah. It hasn't changed.
So then that's the one you voted on?
Yes, not as long.
I did distribute it to everyone, but I may have actually forgotten.
All right, there's no confusion.
Right.
Yes. There's only one.
Okay, that's fine. You have a motion?
I did a motion, I did a motion.
I second it.
Break your session.
James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Okay. The organization portion of this meeting is done. Okay. We have application today for 545 Lake Avenue Urban Renewal.
Stephen. Want to do yours to everybody? May Andrew Karas of the firm Fox Sports on behalf of the speaker. We're here for a continuing application with the DRC amendment for 545 Lake Avenue. Just to give a little bit of background in terms of what's been happening recently, we met with the DRC. We've gone through a number of revisions that we made to the facade, and we are prepared to present those to the board tonight. I think we got some positive feedback from the DRC with regards to these revisions. There are a number of items I do want to address tonight, so I'll be calling three witnesses, Chris Collins, our engineer, Michael Delire from Mohler, and the landscaping, and also Bruce Adelsberger from Barton Architects, who will deal with the revised facade design. So if we can, I'd like to jump right into it and start with the engineering aspect of it. Chris Collins? Mr. Collins, please raise your right hand. I know you've been previously sworn. You saw me swear a testimony about to give the saving of the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Your license is still in good standing since the last meeting?
Yes.
Well, before getting to discussing why doing that, our professionals are in, so there's a discussion to be had, and there are questions to be asked. Please raise your right hand. Just so you test me that getting this matter of truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your names, who elected and who are part of the board.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Thank you.
Jason Fitcher, board engineer.
Mr. Karas, who is yours?
Thank you.
Chris, following up on the last hearing, you prepared revised plans, taking into consideration the comments that were put forth by the board members. Am I correct?
Correct.
Are those the plans that you have up on the board?
Yes.
What I want to do is I want to mark that, and I think we're on A11, if I'm correct. You know, Marie? A11? Okay. Take a look at what's been marked, A11 for identification, which we have up on the screen. Can you give us a last revision date of that?
Sure, it's January 5th, 2023. It's a drawing labeled site plan alternate, and it consists of two sheets, C302 and C402.
All right, let's go through those two sheets. What's described for the board, what's reflected in those plans?
Sure. So since the last hearing, we took a look at what it would look like if we pulled back the planter wall and the ramp closer to the facade to reduce the encroachment into the public right-of-way. So what this plan is showing is some adjustments to the planter wall. That's, that's been brought back about two or three feet to be fully aligned with property line, moving east. The landing area along the lobby area here, this, again, this is raised with a wall, has also been cut back to within the property line. And then the switchback ramp that was previously shown in the, in the plans, this plan, if, if adopted, would bring the ramp against the front of the building, parallel with the building, and reduce the encroachment into the right-of-way. The encroachment that was shown in prior set of plans was approximately, I'm sorry, the encroachment that was previously approved, the original approved plan back in 2017, was approximately 180 square feet, and the, this is actually less than that, approximately 150 square feet.
And the reduction of the encroachment as a result of not having that switchback on the ramp, but basically only having the stairs coming off the front of the building, am I correct?
Correct. It's the, really, the only encroachment with this plan would be the stairs.
And that was already approved previously by the board, am I correct?
Correct.
So all the encroaches that are existing and which we presented to the board, if this alternative plan would be removed, except for the stairs, which I previously approved, am I correct?
That's correct.
What about going to the second page?
Can I just ask a question about that? What about the transformer?
That, that stays.
Okay, that's, that stays, but that's also an encroachment, right?
That's not our encroachment, that's the utility.
Right. But that counts, correct? To the square footage, no, it doesn't?
We don't get a right of way on this.
Okay.
Before you leave the subject, on the east side of the drawing, there's a five-foot concrete sidewalk. I don't see any elevations on that. Does that sidewalk slope up to the, the sidewalk that is parallel to the front of the building?
You're talking about the ramp part?
Yes. The sidewalk that goes to the ramp?
Correct, yes. This is a slope from the existing Lake Avenue sidewalk up to a landing at the corner of the building.
Okay, does that comply with the ADA requirements?
Yes, and that is drawn, and will have to have a handrail to meet the ADA requirements.
So is, so is that ramp part of the, part of the right-of-way?
I don't believe any sidewalk area to a building is considered part of an encroachment. I could be wrong, but I think you're entitled to a sidewalk. I don't know.
Mr. Collins, what's the length? Have that run?
And that was previously approved, anyway.
Yeah, I was going to say that one's already approved.
Did you say there was a handrail?
There will be.
There will be?
Per ADA requirements.
So the length is approximately 18 feet.
And that's consistent with the prior approval of that sidewalk, correct?
Yes. So this is just the grading plan that's associated with this revised design. ADA compliant slopes on the ramp, less than 8.3%, with the landing in the middle, landing at the top and the bottom as well. And some modifications to this eastern walkway here in order to accommodate this revised grading, we moved, there were, I believe there were two steps originally proposed, now there's four, and those will have a handrail as well. But that's within the property outside of the, that's not within the right-of-way.
Are there any other questions with regard to the ramp or the right-of-way?
Okay, so this is the proposal that you're presenting at this point, so what's there now is?
No, it's an alternative proposal.
Oh, it's an alternative? Oh, it's an alternative?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what is there is our proposal. But keep in mind that any right-of-way encroachment has to be approved by the mayor council. What we would prefer to do, what we would submit, is that the board consider both. And if the board has preference for what is existing here with the additional greenery, that this would be all an alternative, and you'd get the mayor council decided they did not want the existing encroachments that are existing.
So is there any landscaping, like a revision to the landscaping?
Testimony's coming.
Oh, testimony, okay. Is that in the plans?
Okay.
Terms of lighting.
Hang on, hang on. So I just want to, you know, so this is the planned view of that. In this configuration, it's a longer run for people who are mobility impaired. It's about 83 feet of total run from the public sidewalk to go up that side, up the ramp to the front door. In the existing current, you know, sort of semi-switchback design that we've got right now, it's only 77 feet of run. And the entrance, you know, it's where you enter the ramp, is close to the front door. So that provides equity, which is a requirement under ADA that, you know, 50% of your main entrance needs to be ADA accessible. Having the ramp near the steps makes it more consistent with the regs. When the ADA ramp is 70 feet away from the front door, it's less consistent with the Also, in this configuration, again, because I haven't, I don't have all of the information on the simulation, but because of the flood regulations, they're not allowed to place fill in front of that ramp. So if they go with this alternate design, it's going to basically be flat ground, and then whichever part of the ramp sticks up highest as it slopes down toward the bottom. That's just going to be exposed concrete. Again, the board can require a particular finish, but it's basically wall for the entire length of that ramp. So as you consider, if you want to make a recommendation as part of any action that we take, you know, if there is a preference, I think there should be a preference to the current configuration as a more visually appealing and ADA-compliant design than this alternative. Although it's in the, you know, I get that what's there now is in the right-of-way, it wasn't approved, but...
Right, but you're also talking about, when you're saying about the run, the run is the difference between something in the 80s versus something in the 70s, as far as feet are concerned.
Right. So if you have a stroller, or you're in a wheelchair, or you just have mobility impairment...
Right, you have about 10 more feet that you have to go.
Right. And you're not entering near the front entrance, you're down the block. You're literally at moonstruck in order to get to the front door.
Right. But you still have to, you still have to take the ramp, even in the current design.
Oh, true.
Okay.
But at least you're looking for the front door in the same place.
Okay. Yeah, but you're coming in the same door.
Ultimately.
Ultimately, you're coming in the same door, no matter which alternate you take.
Which is still an improvement over the original design, which had the two different doors.
Correct.
Correct.
Donna, I have another question for you.
Yeah, sure.
What is the maximum slope permitted on a ramp by the ADA regulations?
8%.
8%? Okay.
You know, there's a certain run, you have to have a landing or whatever, but...
Appreciate it.
One in 12, so it's 8.3%.
Now, with regard to lighting, there are a number of issues that were brought up at the last hearing. The exterior lighting, street lighting, balcony, and mecanic caper. Let's address those.
Sure. So as we discussed at the last hearing, there was a concern over the color temperature of some of the fixtures. I think in particular, some of the ones higher on the building, the balconies. I believe that it was agreed that those would be either replaced, or a film would be applied to them that would bring the color temperature in compliance with the city's lighting ordinance to be 2,700K. There is a concern over the originally, original, and by original, I mean, when we first came back to the board for an amendment design of the streetlight fixtures, the poles and the fixtures themselves. We have revised those as presented at the last hearing to match the Toll Brothers development down the street. So black, gooseneck-style fixture. That has not changed.
Is there a difference in height compared to the Toll Brothers?
Yes, we are proposing a lower mounting height. I believe it's 14 feet.
Is there a reason for that? As opposed to what the normal heights would be?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a discussion with Board Planner's Office, as well as, I believe there was someone else from the City Planning Office there regarding the height of the fixture. And the feedback was that maybe the one in Toll Brothers was a little bit too high, so we brought it down in scale.
All right, so it's based on recommendations from our planners?
Correct.
Yeah, keep in mind, the Toll Brothers project, that building was set further back, so it's always true that the height is more there. What will the height be as per your proposal?
14 feet. Yes.
What was it? I believe it's 14 feet.
Yeah, it's a 12, the fixture is 12 feet on a 14-foot pole, because it hangs down.
So the pole itself is 14 feet, but because of that hook, the weight is really a 12?
Yep, yep. But if that's the recommendation of our planners, then that's, you're in agreement with that? Right?
Yes.
Okay.
And those will be 3,000K, because they only come in 3,000K. The wall-mounted lights along the front facade and some, it's the same fixture along some of the sides as well, that has changed from what we originally came in with for the amendment. And that is actually a newer version of the same model that was originally approved back in 2017. And those have two different mounting heights, one at eight feet and one at 14 feet. I believe the ones on the sides of the building are mounted at 14 feet, the ones in the front are mounted at eight feet. And those are Darsky compliant, they meet the requirements of the lighting ordinance, they are 3,000K, but again, if possible, we will, you know, try to put that film on there that will bring it back to 2,700K. Along the rear of the property, there are some existing lights that are mounted along 550 Cookman, the rear facade of 550 Cookman. Those are being replaced with a new light, similar characteristics, 16-foot mounting height, and that is to provide adequate illumination along this rural walkway, which services both the 545 Lake Avenue building as well as the 550 Cookman building. I believe those tenants have access through these alleyways on the side of the 545 Lake Avenue building. So there needs to be adequate lighting levels for safety in that domain area. And then, in the front, these downlights in front of the lobby are 2,700K, those are new compared to the original approval. And then, we've also, in the lighting analysis, expanded it to also take into account the Cobra Head fixtures that are across the street, although they don't do too much to illuminate the sidewalk in the analysis, but for, in the interest of completeness and thoroughness, we decided to include them as well, those that are existing.
Any other lines, or does that cover it all?
I think that covers it.
Does that cover the, because we had discussions about the balconies and 4,000 Kelvin?
Yeah.
Were those the first lights that you spoke about?
Correct.
Okay, so the 4,000 will no longer be there, we're going down to 2,700 as we talked about. Okay. And that's the balcony lighting?
Yes.
I know that the other, the only other concern that I had about the lighting, and we're going to have to figure out how this is dealt with, is that right now, the temporary lighting that's on that ramp shines into the street, the people that are driving by the street. So I know that it was mentioned that that was temporary, correct?
Yes.
So whatever is approved, those have to be removed?
Yes.
Or changed to something that is downlit and not shining into the street? Because they are right now?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay, we have anything else? No? Okay, any questions by anyone on the board of this witness? No? Any questions from our professionals? No?
Are you going to go through the letter? I have done that previously.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
The December...
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you.
All right, we open it to the public for any questions from the public of this witness, of anything that we discussed with this witness. No? Okay, let's, next witness.
We have to be, so you've got to be clear in what we're going to give instructions as to which option or how you want this to look, so that if it comes back and there's any discussion, and it says, oh, no, you didn't get it right, we're not going to adopt the resolution.
So you're going to have the resolution ready until...
And I would couch it in those terms, but with the understanding that if it comes back and it's not what you all agree to, then... As opposed to, yeah, I'm going to specify you, as opposed to go on another option, which Jason's suggestion was, is to go with preliminary approval to the final approval at the next meeting. Six in one and half dozen in the other to me, I'd rather just have a vote, get it done, get it right, bring it back, I'll have a resolution ready for that night with generic terms, and they'll say, yes, this is the one.
And we'll just put the data...
And you're out of here. If Jason, what he wants, the politician wants, you, you...
Jack, at this point, is the original approval of the ramp and that related area on the table, or has that been...
That's up to you.
Then I would propose that we require the applicant to install the ramp as initially proposed, and we get finished with the issue of whether or not Option A or Option B or...
That's a board, the board has to vote on all that.
Okay.
If you want to go in that direction...
And that's a jump-in approved for, the original...
Yeah, well, let's have Andy back here, he might have some...
That's another option.
Maybe we can talk about that.
Yeah. Jim, state your proposition.
What I'm suggesting is that the board approve the ramp, the ramp area as originally proposed, with the, originally approved, and that way, we don't get...
You don't have to come to it?
We don't get involved with...
You can't.
The floor's out even.
Oh, that's right, because the entry was different. It was a second entrance.
It's not enough.
You need to remove your plans and push it back.
And plus, I'd had two entrances.
Right.
Yeah, you have to be... So that's not...
It's a good thought.
Good try. All right.
There's another, part B to that would be change the entrance back to what it was.
No, don't do that.
Oh, no. That's not going in. We're good.
We're not doing that.
All right. Can I propose a five-minute break?
Please.
A five-minute break, and then we'll come back and discuss a little more.
He's at, but we can...
Yes, well, we convene. Motion to adjourn for a few minutes, five minutes?
Recession.
Recession for five minutes. Recession for five minutes. Thank you.
All in favor?
All right.
Want to?
Come on back.
Conditions.
All right, do we want to deal with the color versions at this point? Is that all right with everybody? All right, let's start there. Where's the architect? Did you, did he go on adjourned?
I'm not on yet.
Did he think we were adjourned? Oh, yeah, go roll call. Well, why not? Let's do that. Let's do that.
Great idea, Marissa.
Yeah, we need some filler time.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton. Jim Enry.
Here.
Jennifer Sauter.
Here.
Vice Chair Rick Lindbergh.
Here.
And Chairman Barbara Kerzad.
Here. Oh, we thought you left.
And I forgot about you.
He's here? Okay. All right, so let's, can we go through the color schemes of the Option A, B, C, or Option 1, or whatever? Now, can I take a shot at it? And then, you guys can shoot me down if you like, feel free. All right.
You've got it.
Let me give it a shot. All right. So we're looking at, keep being honest here. All right, so we've got Scheme 1 on the TV.
This is Scheme 1.
Right, Scheme 1. All of this remains the same. This, the inner...
Yes.
Here, here. Let's go to, what is that, was it on B? I mean, is it on Option 2?
Yes.
This. This, this, actually, this is probably a better one.
It's a dark gray.
The dark gray stays. The light gray goes to that new color.
Orange.
Now, whatever, whatever redwood is.
So existing redwood.
Existing redwood.
Scheme 2, light gray goes to the redwood.
Correct, yes. And the bottom becomes the same brick as what we have already up on top. On the first floor, the bottom becomes that.
Is it redwood?
Right?
It's actually Georgian brick.
So you match the brick.
Just to make a correction, so the light gray goes to the Georgian brick?
It's whatever is there today.
No, it's...
No, this is what's there today.
She's right. No. It's the existing siding is called redwood.
Okay.
Yeah.
This remains the same as today. This does not change. The light gray...
It's, it's, yeah, it's this, right. This is redwood right here.
That's today's color.
Existing.
This is existing, it stays.
Correct.
These, when you go to the next option, these are inserted here, these, the dark gray. Where the dark gray shows up.
And here is the dark gray.
And the red.
Right.
Dark gray and the red get inserted, right?
Gotcha.
Okay? Actually, it was a lot simpler than it was before. All right, so I'm going to complicate things a little. Go ahead, you go.
The cover over the main entry?
Oh, the frame stays the black brick.
This is just staying the black...
Yeah, that's staying.
That's staying the same.
Not changing.
Right. And then, the murals are all around it. And that's up to the Art Council to say, that's their canvas.
Anything in this whole area could be muraled.
Anything there, anything, any kind of artwork or whatever, it's up to the Art Council.
Yep.
And then, we said brick here, right?
Yes. Yes, and the brick on the bottom. Correct.
With the exception, and then, brick at the very bottom.
Yes.
Yes.
And it wraps around it.
Is there a dimension around the front windows we want to exclude from mural?
I think that that already exists, that out, that already...
That exists.
That's, that already stands out. Well, the whole thing is brick. No, 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 I'm saying that this...
Three-dimensional.
Right, that this already stands out from, from, right, this is a different dimension, right, this?
It is.
So that already stands out, so it's not like you have any...
Even though that's depicted in red here, it exists, yeah.
It's already out, like a couple inches, I'm guessing, right?
Yep.
Yeah, that's right, it does bump out.
That already stands out, so that goes to the, that stays what it is, what it is made, it's not... Right?
Well, that's on the top, but not on the side.
Yes. If you go to, like, the first option, you'll see that that's what it is.
Looking at pictures of the entrance. So the actual physical condition, the, from the right-hand side of the window, out to the corner of the building, from the top of the window, oop, sorry.
I'm going to go to the side picture. I have...
Do you have some photos?
Pictures here, yeah. This may help you, some of these.
There you go, right there. So you see the band that's over the top of the windows projects?
This.
Yeah, but on the right-hand side...
It's flush.
It does not, go back to the other, yeah.
Over here, it goes out.
That's all flush, that's all one uniform surface, so if you want to match...
Yeah, there's that little overhead that makes flush.
That limit on that side, yeah, as the band.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, and then, what about, do you have one on the other side?
Well, we'll just delineate the artwork stopping at that.
Right. And on the other sides, I'm guessing it's the same thing, like what Donna suggested.
Sorry.
It's hard to tell here, but it should be, all of look over here.
I believe, I believe this side also projects out, just like this does.
So it should be symmetrical.
It's like an L shape that projects out, just the right side is flush.
Going through my photos, and I don't think I have one that shows it clearly. Okay, so, maybe I do. No, there's a pier, there's a brick pier on the left side. There's three elevations, there's the body, there's this pier, and then, there's the top. They all have three different... Yep, see it on the right side?
Yep, that stays, that...
Yep, so that's, that's at least defined.
Right.
So you need to do the same thing on the right side.
Right, we need the same definition on the left side.
All right, so the question I have is, we talked about the grills on the windows. I see the garage door has been installed. Are there changes from, and you may not be able to testify to this, because I don't know that you've seen the JCA plans, are there any changes in the design or style of the garage door or that trash roll-up door as part of your changes to windows and things like that?
The only, I believe, what's depicted on here does not have the flood vents, those are included within the door.
Okay, and from what I observed today is the flood vents are black.
I believe so.
And originally, they were supposed to be glass. Yeah, so the bottom panel of the garage door is black, and the flood vents are black. And then, the other, the one, two, three, four, three panels above...
And then the other, the one, two, three, four, three panels above are glass with a black frame. And the JCA plans had specified, I think it was aluminum with glass, and the flood vents would be also clear, so. So that has to be remedied. So which, which do you prefer? Do you want, there's, so like I said, what's, what's there right now is, go back to your elevation drawing? Your Scheme 2 or whichever is, works best. Okay, so, right now, the bottom panel of the garage door, instead of them being glass or transparent, is solid black. And the others are transparent. Is that a configuration that works for you guys?
Oh, yeah.
If that's fine, I mean, if we don't have to change anything else, just make sure it's represented in the plans.
Yes.
Okay.
So for the, for the future version, that, that should be represented.
And then, again, JCA had specified a steel type of roll-up door for the trash door that was like a dark bronze, so it's going to be dark bronze, make sure your plans say dark bronze or whatever it's going to be. Okay, and then we have the grills, and we have the sides. I think that's it for windows and doors. All right, so do you have what you need for that regarding?
I believe so.
That design? Okay, so we need that to come back. Why don't we do the other rough one about the, the ramp? Does the board have any preference regarding the ramps? The one that was presented today, or the one that exists, or both? I have to say that personally, I, I will go with whatever the board feels. I'm fine with either one. Anybody have any preferences?
Let's make it simple.
Go ahead.
Let's run the, the ramp from the sidewalk perpendicular to the building to that platform where we make a 90-degree turn.
The one that, the one that was presented today.
I can make a 90-degree turn.
Well, it'll be whatever, whatever the, whatever was presented today.
Which option is A?
That was the alternative.
Oh, you mean the law.
The ramp that was presented today.
Oh, okay, I got you. Get rid of the, the ramp that's already built.
So, first option is B, so forth.
Right, so does, does the, does the board want to even entertain what exists today? Or does the board want to go with the option that was presented today and go with that and bring that, have that brought to the council?
Let's make it simple, let's go with what we have, what we have presented.
What was presented today?
Yes.
Anybody else here have, feel strongly?
A11.
I'll go with that.
It's left?
I support you.
Make reference to it, Option B, A11. Option B through exhibit A11.
Jack, let's make this part of the two weeks.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, so then the right-of-way decision goes, the board is suggesting, I mean, the board would like to move forward with the suggestion that was brought together today, what was presented to us today.
So you're only going to present one option to the Mayor and Council as opposed to two? That would be?
Or they're one option.
Option B.
What was presented today?
A11. Okay. All right, I want to make sure I get it right. Okay, Jason, what did you say?
We talked before about cleaning up the architectural plans with the colored materials and all that kind of stuff and bringing it back in two weeks.
Yes.
I think we should do the same thing with the site plan, just so we know which site plan we're approving.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's.
That's fine. You can do that. You need to do it because if you want it in two weeks, that's what you got to do. All right, so you'll bring back the site plan.
Your site plan alternative with the revised ramp isn't A11.
Yeah.
And the lighting plan should reflect that, because it had, the lighting plan had the old ramp, or the existing ramp.
It will update that. Okay.
And the landscape plan.
Yeah.
Whatever you have in two weeks, that's the picture that's going to be approved.
Right, that's what we're asking for.
Yeah, so that makes eighteen and sixteen, okay?
Correct.
And we'll put signature blocks on the engineering.
Except we have to deconstruct the entire front building.
No. That's up to you. I got that. Can you hold your thoughts for a second? Any, so now are the design exceptions still in existence that we needed or they're going away because of the change in lights? I have from the old meeting, I had some notice there were a couple of design exceptions.
I think the only exceptions would be with regard to the kelvin, the temperature of the lights.
There are a couple of lights that would be 3,000, right.
There've been a couple that are going to still remain at 3? And are, are those going to have the film over?
Well, no, those are the ones at 4,000 that we're doing the film over, I believe.
Those were the balcony lights.
The balcony lights, correct.
They're going to do the film on the balcony lights.
Balcony lights, that's the only design exception left.
I'll check.
I think light levels of the property.
Yeah, light levels of the property.
The balcony lights are going to be painted to match the color of the.
Of the, of all the rails.
Yes.
They will no longer be white.
Right.
It's all the same color as the grid color.
Yeah, I, I, everyone knows, the staff up there, I always make it that all, all representations set forth in the record are made part of the record, so that if you've represented that a light fixture is going to turn from white to black, it has to turn from white to black. And I don't go crazy with nine pages of conditions and all that, so.
Okay.
As long as they can.
Right, so, so we still have.
Yeah, I'm, we're not done, we still have to get to.
I'm talking about design exceptions.
Okay, go.
So we still have the aisle width, minimum aisle width.
Right, 22.
I'm not doing that, I'm not doing that, I'm not doing that.
Too retractative, too retractative design exception.
That's the aisle width.
Well, trying.
That's fine, that's fine.
So?
That's fine.
Okay.
The side columns.
I think that we'll go through.
Parpet. It does not have the articulated parpet, that's the design exception.
I hate to backtrack, but I just want to make sure, did, did we consensus that, I did the whole, did we, about going to the, and the, meaning like.
If, if, if anybody on the board feels that we shouldn't, then we should talk about it and, and, and.
Yeah, we haven't voted, right?
We haven't voted on this thing, but if, but if somebody feels that they, they would like to have, to leave it the way it is and have a, a Plan B, then we should talk about it.
Well, I think if you want the one that was built tonight, you're more than welcome to say we want that one and propose the one existing as Plan B as well, as long as the, just to avoid it being bounced back to us if the city.
Yeah, we don't want it bounced back, no matter how you look at it.
Whatever one you choose, we choose, we should choose one and then have the existing or the new, whatever, the opposite one as the alternative.
Well, if, if Jack is okay with that.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay, so why don't we say that we're proposing that, we're proposing that it's what was provided today.
Option B from exhibit A11.
Right, what was provided today.
And the alternative, if that is.
And the alternative is leaving it as is. What was built.
Because my option is really around the deconstruction of everything that's existing.
So your option is what, that you wanted to?
No, I'm saying my, my issue is like I.
I understand that you have to tear it all down. I understand.
And, so that's what I'm saying, but I'm one person, so that's why I don't, I want to streamline it.
No, we're, we're fine, we're fine with that. I think that, that Jack can do that.
It doesn't add any time to the.
It doesn't add any time to the process.
Then I have no problem with that.
Right, as long as it doesn't add time to the process, we don't want to add time. Well, you're, so you're making a recommendation that you prefer. We prefer A, I mean, we prefer what was presented tonight. So you're telling the council. We're preferring that, but if they do not prefer that, for whatever reason, what exists today and whatever deals they need to make with the developer regarding that right-of-way is up to them.
So I'll put it in simplistic terms, Ford recommends the Option A, excuse me, Option B is depicted in exhibit A11, or in the alternative, if that's unacceptable, leave it as it presently exists. Does that work for you?
Yes.
Work for the board?
Right, and I don't, I don't know if we need to put something in there, Jack, about the city, the city makes, I mean, the council makes certain decisions based on, on that design. Let's say if, whatever exists, the council makes whatever decisions they make and they put whatever restrictions they would need to pay, put on it, saying that the developer has to do something.
Yeah.
Pay money, whatever.
That's up to them.
That's up to them.
Yes.
That's no longer in, in our frame.
No, no, this will do.
This is.
What they do.
Whatever they do at that point, not us, and it doesn't add any time to this process.
They're really going to go with one or the other.
Right.
Hopefully, and then.
That'll be that.
What they do with the developer in terms of how much money they want to keep it in.
To leave it the same, that's up to them.
I have one last really annoying question, but is the planning board's design preference for A or B? That's what.
The B.
B, okay.
B, that's the one you want.
Yeah.
That's, I'm not telling you that's what you should do, I'm just telling you that's, that's what, that's what Jim is saying.
Right, right.
Is yours different?
Yeah. I know it has been, but I'm saying, I thought the whole, anyway, I, I had seen it a different way. I don't care, as long as the end product gets streamlined, but from a design perspective, I still prefer A, I mean, the original A.
Well, you're going to have to vote on it with the board.
What, what exists.
Yeah, that's, that's why I bring it up.
Which, which options you want.
Right.
Prefer and which ones, that's your decision.
We can do that. We can, we can, we can vote on that. I'm comfortable with voting on it.
Okay. In terms of the balcony lights, as informed, the film, we can get it down to 3,000 kelvin, I'm hoping to get it down to 2700 kelvin. Well, I'll put it in at 3, if that's okay with the board?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and then if you get down to 27?
The maximum, 3,000.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's what I have there.
That's the question, just so I understand, so if we're approving Option B as our preferred preference.
If we're saying that that's our preference.
Do they have to go back to the council?
Yes.
Now, Option B is within the original approach.
Yes.
Yes, because it's different. It's different than the original approach.
The council may just say, fine, it's much less, get out of here, whatever.
I'm hoping you don't care.
That's, yeah, I'm sure that's what the direction they're heading, but that's.
Right, that's mine.
Okay, and so, why don't we get a consensus as to what the board wants to see, what the board wants to see in terms of the amendments? I have a number of conditions.
Go ahead.
That I have to go over, that still have to go. I want to talk about review and approval by the Ford Plane Manager here.
Yes.
The DDP permit issue that I've talked to Jason about, I need clarification on that.
Yes.
I asked Jason and Donk on that, so that we make sure we're not running afoul of any new.
Right, but, but my, my assumption would be that the Flood Plane Manager would be doing that anyway, but I agree, let's put it in there.
You're the technical guy on that.
Yeah.
We need something from the DDP.
Okay, that's fine, we can put it there, but the Flood Plane Manager has to agree.
Is what we need.
Whatever it is, you guys tell me what it is, I don't know what it is, whatever you need, whatever you think you need, you tell me.
Yeah.
And I'll put it in the resolution, God bless you.
For me, it's approval by the Flood Plane Manager.
Yeah.
Those are two separate things.
I agree, that's fine.
They're looking at kind of the same thing, but they're.
No, I'll put it in as two distinct conditions.
Yeah, two distinct items.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Any outstanding conditions, all the generic. In that writing, any more insight, just to cover it? The, the mural, by understanding, as you can get this official. That means.
I'm taking a stand, I'm writing any more.
Review and approval of what to go into these spaces, and the spaces, as I understand it, are the diagram for accepted classroom areas around the doors.
Correct.
And the frame around the blocks.
Okay, right, and the framework.
The red framework around us.
That's okay, yeah, we'll, we'll deal with that. There's something in, written from my notes from a meeting or so ago that there was a wooden fence to be removed, has that been taken place? So we'll address.
Yeah, there, there was, there was something about a wooden fence would be replaced, was that on the Moonstruck side or?
Done.
That was done?
Done, okay, all right.
So, so we should probably leave it in there because I'm, I'm, I'm not sensing a firm yes.
Okay, I'll leave it in.
I need a, I need a firm yes.
I want a representation on the record, if you can do it or not.
And I'm assuming that all ADA stuff is.
Wait, is it done?
Is it done or is it?
Is that?
Let's leave it in.
Yeah, let's leave it in.
Your defense.
Okay.
In, yeah, okay, as resolution complies.
Yep.
Okay. We're going to adjourn. I'll put some language in there about returning at the next meeting with site plans.
Question.
And architectural plans.
Yep.
And rendering for color, right?
And renderings. To match essentially the substance of the discussion between you and us. If I may, the, the fence and the lattice fence, there is a lattice fence, that's Moonstruck fence, that's there.
I know that we'd spoken about it having to be replaced, something happened?
I have that in my notes, I made you watch.
Yeah, something happened and it would have to be replaced.
If it's Moonstruck fence, it may have come. Okay, yeah, if it's Moonstruck fence, they can't. Yeah, if it's Moonstruck fence, they can't.
All right.
Okay.
Depends who took it down.
We won't get into that issue. That's the essence.
And, and obviously ADA, all the ADA compliance falls under your, your umbrella.
That falls under,
Because you have the ADA railings, because we have some, some issue with railings.
That, that's a part of Jason's resolution compliance with us, with plans. Correct, Jason?
Correct.
Okay, so I don't, I don't get into the finite detail, because once I put it in, then I said, well, we did this, and it was something else, and Jason said it wasn't in there.
There, there is one other thing, Jack, that, that I would like to mention, that if we, if the council, and I don't know how we do this, is that if the council does approve to leave everything the way it is, those temporary lights that are on the current ramp are to, are, are facing the street. So when I drive by my car, those lights are facing me, as opposed to down. I know that they were, mentioned they were temporary.
If council allows,
The ramp to stay.
Existing improvements in R O W, existing light fixtures there in the order of fashion to be revoked. Okay.
Jack?
Yes?
In the event that the council approves the ramp as proposed tonight, Donna was going to look into the plantings between the foundation wall and the sidewalk.
We have to approve the proposed plantings and the revised layout.
Is that in your report, or is that?
No, because they just presented.
Yeah, and we've agreed that any changes, Donna will make sure I have that in, okay?
Okay.
Then light fixtures and stuff that we discussed earlier, the height of the,
That's in the plans, right?
Right, that was, that was discussed earlier, so I think that that was,
And you approve, God bless you, if there is those plans, you don't have to address it in resolution, in conditions of approval.
Okay.
As long as you're approving the correct plan, and then whoever follows those plans during the construction process issues permits, will make sure you install that.
All right, so I think that the only, the only item that we have to just talk about is that, is anybody, which, what is the preference of that ramp to remain the same?
Yeah.
Versus others, so we could take a, like a little straw man's palm?
Yeah, I need to hold a list on that issue.
Okay.
Because that, that would affect the entire people.
Right, of either, well, we do one or the other, yeah. Okay.
Let's get a vote.
Okay, can we get a vote from the board members if you would prefer to have the, what was presented today for the ramp? Or if you would prefer what exists today that is physically built there to remain?
I just want to verify, confirm that if we approve, if we select what's already there, that we're not adding any time to this process?
No, because it's there.
It's there.
So, I mean, like going before council and approval?
It's still there, go.
They still have to go.
It's still going no matter what.
Right, so that's, that has to take, so I just want to make sure that we're not adding any time to anything.
Mm-hmm.
It could be less.
I think it's less time.
Right, and they have to do any deconstruction and all that kind of stuff.
Right.
Well, then, you know, there's a process in getting the right-of-way ordinance, so we've got to draft the right-of-way. You have to present it to Askew Reading, and then you come back and you have a vote on that. That takes time. With Option 2, seeing that we're within the confines of what already has been approved, I would attempt to argue before the Mayor and Council, the city attorney, that we don't need a new right-of-way, and we just deconstruct.
So what part of the new proposal is within the approval? Because you've extended the ramp now versus a switchback.
But it is not a right-of-way, the stairs would remain.
So that's the only thing that,
That's it. Everything else would be taken out right of the walls.
The sidewalk on the east side of the,
But I, I'm not so sure that when you have a sidewalk to a building that's included, because ordinarily, you know, stairs are obstructing.
I hear you say, my argument would be that that's not sidewalk anymore, it becomes a ramp. Now you're, but in either case, you have to go before the council.
Well, I'm going to have to at least open it up. Yeah, I don't think we need to get into that, because that's going to be his issue to deal with.
Because the council.
The council.
Right, but Rip is concerned it's a delay.
It's not going to delay. It's still, they're still the same, they're going to still be going in the same direction.
So either choice is going to be the same amount of time?
So if we could get, why don't, why don't we throw out on the floor, leave, let's start with the first vote on leaving what's there, and see how you get there versus what is being proposed.
And again, the existing.
Yeah, my, my only reason for wanting the new proposal was because I thought it was going to shorten the timeframe. But if there's, if there is no difference in the amount of time it's going to take to get this through, then I'm fine with it, it's already there.
So I, I need to know which direction we want to go in.
Mm-hmm, so let's, let's, let's each take a vote, say, would you like to, to be left, or would you like to go with the new proposal?
Am I correct that you're going to make a preference, should we do both?
We're going to do a preference, but the other one is an option. So, do you want to do a,
Start from the top.
Start from the top?
Okay. James Bonato?
Which would you prefer?
Existing.
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 Okay.
Councilwoman Clayton?
I'm abstaining. Okay?
Abstain.
Right. Okay.
Jim Henry?
The new proposal.
Okay, Jennifer Sauter?
Existing.
Rick Lambert?
Existing.
And Farmer?
Existing.
So, so preference is first one? Existing conditions?
And the,
Let's do this over again.
One question for you, with the existing thing, do you still plan to pull planter back that, to the property line, or that will stay where it is as well? Because it matches the extent of the,
It would be what's on the plans and what's there.
So it's staying where it is?
It's a lot lower than the, you know, the,
Just asking.
The porch, so it might not be that big a deal, I don't know.
It is, it is.
So now the ultimate becomes that depicted on A. So then, you've got what you want there, so the motion then would be to approve the changes, what you wanted, and all of these conditions. And then put the understanding, and back in two weeks, both the site plan, side, all the plans have to be revised or revised, and then the way they're supposed to be.
And if, and if they're not,
Then you don't sign the resolution.
Whatever are, we do not sign the resolution.
We're not going to sign the resolution. Well, Mr. Karas, came for the head shake, well, yeah, we can do the head shake. Yes. Yeah, it's yes, thank you. You're making me work tonight.
All right, so, so here we go. Here we go.
Okay.
Can I, can I get a motion to approve?
Wait, wait, yep, 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 thank you.
Can I get a motion?
Let's get a motion.
Can I get a motion for public comment?
Some moves.
Thank you. Second. Lost in weeds.
All right, public comment, come on up.
Hi, name is Michelle Jimenez, do you need spelling? Okay, M-I-C-H-E-L-L-E-J-I-M-E-N-Z.
Your apartment address, please?
Uh, sure, 398 Kettle Creek Road, Apartment 10, Comsterford, New Jersey.
And you're going to be testifying now, so you're going to make, please raise your right hand. So I'm going to swear that testimony about to give is not going to be truthful truth and nothing but the truth.
Okay, you have three minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, so first, I just want to thank everybody, I think we've come a long way since the last meeting, there's been a lot of progress. I think you've heard everybody, and, and things are progressing in the right direction. I also wanted to thank you and possibly address Councilwoman at the moment for the preference changing to what's existing. I'm very, very concerned that if there are changes ripping a ramp out, that that's going to extend our move-in date by months, because there's no way we can move into a building that doesn't have a handicap access. So I'm really glad the preference changed, and I'm hoping the city council sees that as well. You know, again, I think the shorter timeline for us residents that are, you know, really dying to get in there, it's, it's been almost six months delay at this point, so we're, we're really struggling. I know some of us don't have places to live, and there's, there's a lot going on. So really, I just want to appeal, you know, to the board and to Councilwoman, I know you abstained, and, and I know you'll be voting on this at the council meeting, but just to really consider also the benefit of, of the public who are, you know, potentially moving in and are really dying to get in here and become a resident of Asbury Park. I actually do own a home here as well that I rent out. Had I known this would be delayed, I would be living there instead of, instead of moving here. But that, that's really all, I just want to thank you guys all for hearing us and, and trying to keep our best interests in mind as you're, you're going through this application.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else? No? Okay, motion to close public comment.
Some move, second.
Okay. All right. All right. Let's try this. Can I get a motion to approve this application with all of the, everything that we talked about in the last half hour or so of, of, of resolutions that have to be included in the resolution compliance portion that Jack had mentioned?
Did we decide on turnbuckles?
We did.
It's all part of it.
We did, it's all yes.
I thought so.
We, yeah, we're into the turnbuckles.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Some moves.
It's all right, some moves, so we got a second. Okay, so we got Rick, and we've got Jim.
They just have to come back with the plans, take five minutes to show them to the board, and as long as we can blow through them in five or 10 minutes, we're good. And we'll get them to you before us.
James Bonato?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Nice chair, Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Chairwoman, Chairwoman Verne Corzine?
Yes. How many people is that for?
Six.
That's six. Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's,
All right, we have to be careful next time that we have five, at least next time.
Oh, yeah?
Because I will be, I will be away on the night.
Five that voted on it.
Yeah, well, if, if they're in compliance, it's really only a resolution adoption. And I only need a majority of whoever shows up that voted in favor of it.
Okay.
So we're, we'll be okay there, but that's still a good thought.
Just so you know.
I mean, adjourned.
You betcha.
So, generally, before we go any further, just for the members of the public who are here, we're not going to be any further notice. The matter is going to be continued to that, to the next meeting on January 23rd, 7:00 P.M. For the purpose of making sure that the plans match with what the discussion was. So you won't be getting any additional notices.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess that will, for regarding 614 Cookman, bringing that, we're carrying it to, to the 23rd, it is, do we have, we have time there on the 23rd, Mary?
Yeah.
Okay, so if I could get a motion to,
Move to carry, 614 Cookman, without further,
Okay. Second. All right.
Second. Move to end.
Move, move to adjourn. Second.
I have a motion to carry.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, without further notice. Rick and Yvonne, yes.
Okay, I want to propose, I was having, matters carried to that date, time, place.
And we're motion to adjourn.
There'll be no further notice on that application.
No.
Nope.
And we move to adjourn. And we all agrees.
And we all agree.
It's all over.
Okay.
Follow.